Recorder.
Or just.
We'll call the regular school board meeting for November nineteenth. Is the mission of Solen Community Schools. In our city and out in place to learn, lead and grow. Uh roll call.
Roll call, roll calls here. Haleska.
Here.
Brown.
Here. Yep.
Lang here and Coons is absent. Oh, I'm sorry. Right, any.
Breathe, breathe.
Here.
It's almost a little frustrating. We had a school board meeting last night and we're back here for the second time in two days and so what's allegiance?
I am one of the leaders, soon to fly of the United States of America. And into the public for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, you got to stand.
Okay.
I gotta read the words. Okay. At the other office. Megan, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa. And you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of the board member in this Solon Community School district. As now and thereafter required by law.
I do.
Welcome to the board.
Thanks.
Welcome, everyone. I understand that the founder of the high school at seven o'clock, so we're gonna try and be expeditious in our efforts tonight.
Thank you.
So we will keep moving on along, uh celebration achievements. Somebody is celebrating.
I will start. All right, just a few things happening at Lakeview. Last week, we had a breakfast with buddies event. Had about a hundred parents there, grandparents, people to um eat. It was really exciting. At this time, we had um some high school students, um thank you, Mr. Bunkers, that stood by the back door. So kids coming off the bus that like didn't have a buddy could eat with the high school students. So that was really fun. Um kids really enjoyed that. So we'll continue that. We have two more breakfasts with buddies this year. Um we're trying to do it three times throughout the year. So parents or grandparents can kind of take their turn and not everyone at once. So was well attended. Um our first graders have been doing their community helpers unit right now. And so we've had lots and lots of parents in um explaining their jobs. It's been really fun to see parents explain really sophisticated jobs to young learners and in really like fun and interactive ways. Um we've gotten a few mascots, like the D and R mascot was in and so that's been fun too for kids to see in the hallway. Um working on some whole whole school portion of our graduate skills. Um this month, we're focusing on accepting directions and what it looks like and sounds like to accept directions when they're given by adults and how we respond. Um and so we're working towards earning getting to pie some teachers in the face for celebrating our hard work with that. So um just taking some very basic social skills and teaching them to everyone in really explicit ways. Um and then professional development focuses right now, looking at the new ELA and math standards and um making sure we have things prioritized and aligned for our first report card coming out here in December. And then we're also doing an augmentative and alternate communication training um with the SLP at school this week. So just talking about different ways that our kids communicate and making sure that all adults in the building are aware and know how to um use devices, visuals, things like that to make sure that all of our, we're meeting all of our students. At SIS, um we had the album club went to the senior center and did some Halloween trick or treating things there at the end of October. Um and that was led up by Miss Back to the Wheeler. So I've been really invited to get their costume, you know, my kind of our seniors, see them there. Um Halloween party was amazing, school-wide celebration there, lots of support from our families and just providing prizes and uh coal farms for like small pumpkins for pumpkin peating and um lots of adults volunteering, parents in the building did help manage that day. It was really fun for kids. Fourth graders went on their first field trip. They went with fossil gorge into the Iowa History Museum. All tied into their science and social studies learning going on right now. Um so they had a really great day to be able to do that as well. So they had a great time. Um learning mostly about weathering and erosion and then Iowa history, of course. So that was cool. Book fair came in and and it did their clean Kelsey Grill. It was amazing getting that all organized for us and stuff. So um just a special shout out to Mr. Shealy for being adjusted or being so flexible. He adjusted this classroom space for the leaves to make that happen. So. And then we had our Veterans Day assembly. So as I asked, um asked all of our students and families to send in pictures of their veterans and we put together a really full slide deck. Um shared just a little bit about what Veterans Day is with kids, read the whole um picture book that we had found. Just to help them think about veterans are all around us. They're not just, you know, um working in the military, but also with military every day. And um slide deck turned out really, really cool. Um we had like eighty-six submissions or something like that for it. So it was really cool. And then we also celebrated World Kindness Day on November eleventh. Everybody dressed in blue. We did some kindness challenges for kids. Um and then we were excited to welcome these boys back then. So.
I'm busy.
Uh from the middle school, we, uh as you know, moved our campus window up a little bit from what it traditionally had been and that caught folks off guard a little bit. And so feedback was, I would say, a little negative going in, but after going through it and meeting families about two weeks prior to when we normally would would meet and was really appreciated and I liked some sort of conversation since then. Uh followed on uh Veterans Day, we traditionally had a host ship when we were over here and uh I think our kids were a little young as an audience with some of the speakers. And so we, I don't want to say gladly, but felt it was more appropriate than the high school took over that we've been looking for our way to uh contribute. Uh this should be sold flag. It's to buy the flag um in honor of the family number, kind of family number. Uh and then in their description, they included the the ranch and everything. So it was a that in itself is a really neat experience for kids. And most recently, um we've had a lot of teachers partaking of professional development around the AI. And that has just been really eye-opening for uh me as well as our staff of um possibilities, um but also the passions and we look for. So lots of good learning in that area.
Lots going on at the high school tonight is the Walmart band. Uh we have a couple hundred students uh this afternoon at the high school uh that are practicing and now we'll put on the the performance tonight. So it's kind of cool to see some different faces in there and then having some fun down there. Um we had Grace Hooper, uh two-time state champion, uh the swim meet this last weekend, uh so uh fifty in the one hundred uh win win state championship in both of those. Students attend FFA National, went with the egg program uh from Prairie to head out to Indianapolis and attended the the national FFA uh up there as well. Um the musical was fantastic, uh lightning theme uh kind of performance there. It was just a lot of talented talented kids that we've got. Uh and I know we're looking for ways to continue to promote that, um because it was just a exceptional show. So um and then as a district, but as the as the building, um we're rated as a highly performing, uh the high school was, is the from the Iowa uh kind of this uh our grading system, I guess you would think. So uh kudos to our staff for that. And professional development uh has been looking a lot of degrees. One of them is kind of trying to help out in grading committee, um and taking a look at some of our grading practices and uh our current thoughts on that. And I know there's more work to be done on that end as well, but uh taking a look at that. So there's a lot of good things going on there.
Anything else from Central Avenue simply? Thanks. You always enjoy hearing what's going on. It's nice to have the the principals here with us uh in this one.
Yeah, you you didn't mention, you told us this this morning as far as that uh fourth grade with the um cookbook.
Oh, yeah, totally forgot. Um fourth grade is so part of an SEF grade that um Mark Sutton applied for. The fourth grade involves some collaboration between the SIS students and the high school cooking class. Becky West has been in charge of that. Um and our first round of kids went over this past week, which was Miss Wheeler's class. Um they went over, they planned on Wednesday and then they cooked on Friday and got some really cool pictures from that. Um and it's just fun to see Miss Walden's class goes later this week. So they'll be taking their turn rotating through. So you know, all a hundred fourth graders cooking in the rooms, probably not a great idea. So.
Nice walk of uh burnt coal and you know, uh married, very uh done, well done. But then a nice smell of cookies that came with that. So the burnt cookies kind of came uh together and made a nice aroma.
Yeah, that's cool.
Uh focus on learning, outdoor world by the high school science team. High school science team is here. Welcome.
Hello. Well, good evening. Thanks for your time tonight. We're um thankful to to have some time to share with you um about two electives that were new last spring. So first of all, I'm Don Costa County. So I'm one of the science teachers.
I'm Jenny Gold. I was not an outdoor world teacher, but the science teachers. Um I was with muscles. I got to teach a section of outdoor world last year.
Yeah, that guy also not fit to teach.
Yeah.
Yeah. This year I will.
Um so one of the two new classes that we introduced last year was forensics too. So forensics has been a class we've taught for many, many years and a lot of different a lot of us have taught it. Um and it's just been very popular. So we um thought, well, let's continue this. Kids are really interested. They really like that aspect of it. So we introduced that. So the topics that we did this last spring anyway were toxicology, like poisons, drug overdoses, things like that. We did a lot with the body in terms of autopsy. So um Carol LaVoy from Johnson County Medical Examiner's Office. She came and talked to them about what that job is like. So um one of the things we'd like to do in our elective classes in particular as the science team is bring in um those uh community members and really introduce them to career ideas and things like that. Get them the kids thinking about, could I see myself doing this and that sort of thing? So that was really cool to hear her talk about her daily life um and that sort of thing. Uh so we do a lot with the body. We did a little bit with ballistics. Um we did quite a bit with arson and then we did some with impressions, like tire impressions and foot impressions and dental impressions. We did quite that, all from that forensic science lens. So these are just pictures from like some of the events that we did, like in arson, they built little model houses and then we started them on fire to watch fire behavior um with the help of our head guy over here. So that was a lot of fun. Um I think we were all a little nervous. We didn't know how that was gonna go, but it was a lot of fun. Kids really enjoyed that. And then I think I highlight too was we did get to go to DCI in Ankeny and toured the facility there, which was really fascinating um in that process as well. So that was one of the classes that we introduced. Then the other one we introduced was outdoor world. Um and so Elizabeth, myself, and then Caitlin, we each had a section this last spring, and this is during fourth quarter, when it's supposed to be easier as well. Uh but what's really cool and what I wanna just share with the group here tonight too, is that we all worked on developing the curriculum for that class. So that was a big part of our CLT time last year is us working hard, working together to create what we thought would be important experiences using our local environment, using community and building community partnerships for that. But I'll let these guys kind of add to some of this stuff.
Yeah, so we talked about a lot of those different topics up there, but we we focused around the Lake McBride watershed. So a lot of our field trips were to places in the area rather than going further out. Um we also worked on developing this class a lot because kids are spending less time outside, so more about the electronic. So we were trying to get them different ways to interact in nature, but it also allowed them to build some of those interpersonal communication skills that they spent a lot of time in different groups, working with. Um it was a nine twelve class, so it wasn't just upperclassmen, just underclassmen. They got a lot of chances to interact with different people that they normally wouldn't interact with.
So we did lots of outdoor stuff um and built a lot of relationships and we're still working on these community partners and stuff. So we contacted the city of Solon and part of the Lake McBride watershed. We wanted to help kids understand what happens to our wastewater when you're at school and what is that involved with? So we got Dave there and he was able to take basically the day because we had three sections of this. So he would, we'd take a block down and he would talk to the students about that process and, you know, look toward the future and things like that, which was really cool. So that was a field trip day um as well.
Um we also got to partner with Johnson County Conservation for one field trip. Um we went out and we did a macro invertebrate survey. So we had these big nests and we were in the pond and we were collecting stuff and they got to sort through some of the mud and the leaves and the sticks. Um and get some of those invertebrates out of there. And then we got to take them up and look at them through the microscope. So in the corner there is one of the critters that they caught. And then they got to go through and identify all of them to see all of the biodiversity in the pond, but we can also relate them back to the water quality and they were able to sort of um analyze the quality of that hot water.
More pictures of that day, yes.
And while you're looking at those too, we picked fourth quarter as we needed the year to prepare, but we also thought, gosh, the weather is gonna be so much nicer. But you'll notice in most. If we didn't get a lot of nice weather, did?
Yeah.
We also got to go back later in the quarter with Johnson County Conservation and do some hiking and some birding. So same sort of thing. We we had our binoculars, we had our birding posts, went through the forest and got to work on identifying birds based on visuals, auditory, um just kind of a new experience for students again.
One of our big units was orienteering. So we had compasses, we practiced different aspects of the compass and parts. And then like their test was a course. They had to work their way through an actual course to see if they could properly orient here with their um compass.
We also had to learn. Spend a couple CLT hours outside.
Yes, we had the D and R come and they did a bunch of uh teaching with us. So that was a lot of fun. Yeah. Uh really cool. We brought two Solon graduates back and they were able to share their experiences with what they're currently doing. Um so Shelby Gunnell, so she is doing a PhD program, I believe it is. Um and so she's been doing marine research and so that was really cool. And then Julia DeVulke. Um she's been working both with the National Forest Service and the National Park Service, which I'm sorry, I see we have spelling error up there, but with her name, but um so that was really interesting, I think, for students to see, you know, what kinds of careers could go with being outdoors and um again, can I see myself doing that? Does that seem like a good fit for me sort of thing? And again, that tied to Solon.
Uh well, so I, I mean, I was down with the Willoughby. I was part of like comparing for all of this with the Willoughby, but they read a book. So the book was called Willoughby and then it went through different um activities and discussions and really they developed activities that they thought that could like expand the understanding from the Willoughby uh books. And then they brought it to the first graders. And so each uh they had stations throughout the whole like they make well, that nature area, the the, yeah, the Solon nature area. And so they would just move from, you know, center to center and there were different activities and students loved them. And they did a really good job and they had a lot of positive, like I think they were very nervous about that. Uh and unsure of themselves about leading, you know, fourth graders through their their station, but they were, you know, it went well. They uh I think we're very positive about it. So so anyway, just kind of got them out of their comfort zone a little bit too, right? They got, you know, just did a plan and then, you know, actually teach uh kids different skills at different stations around uh the nature area. But the the downside was is it was really cold that day. And it, that was a hard day to plan because, you know, it's like we were watching the weather, watching the weather and then we're like, okay. Okay, we're just have to go for it. And and it just turned out to be a really cool day. And the very next day was a really nice day.
Yeah.
Of course. So that would have been much better. But that's, I think, what's tricky about the course is figuring out like what day is going to be nice.
Yeah. And that that collaboration was also kind of special because the Willoughby books were purchased through the Yuck Grant. Uh so that the um high schoolers could read it. Um I know March uh was in charge of kind of getting that out to the fourth graders throughout I think the second semester a little bit, but uh just a shout out to the SEF to help make that possible, right? To be the bridge to getting the high school working with those fourth graders, I think is always a really cool thing. We were excited to get that going again. So and thanks to Melissa for taking a risk. You know, I think we're all just kind of like, what is this in the world like? So we appreciated that too. We've been to Solon Prairie. So this is the Solon Prairie just across the way. And so we did biodiversity studies there. And so that's what that's at. We're just trying to show you like, we're really trying to get the kids to see that we have great resources in our backyard, right? We're right here. We can get out and do that.
And then towards the end of the quarter, one of the very last days, we got to partner with Johnson County again and we got to go kayaking during class. Um the kids loved it. We took a little tour. Most of them were pretty comfortable. Um it was a great day. The weather was beautiful. Nobody landed in the lake, so it was a good day all around.
We did have some kids that had never kayaked. So that was just really exciting to be able to give them an experience that they had not done before. So that was cool.
So yeah, all in all, we we just had a ton of support. I mean, we bothered Zach so much last year with questions on transportation was a big one because, you know, you kind of wanted to get him out there, but we also had to have vans or vessels and um we were just fortunate enough to have that support to get him out there. And then also we just, Josh was amazing at finding funding to get this thing going. Um because we had nothing. I mean, we we purchased a lot of equipment for this, materials, um and, you know, hopefully that we have that support for the consumable stuff that want to replace. Um and then just the the freedom to schedule the sections when we could. Like I said, fourth quarter was ideal for us because we could build the glass and hope for good weather. Um and and we're already talking potentially about a second one, maybe in fall, like not next fall, but in the future. Like during first quarter, just to get a totally different look at what we really learn, what the outdoor world is like. So yeah, that's.
That's kind of long, sorry. We're just super excited to hear. Yeah, very appreciative.
How many students did you have in, you have the two courses, forensics and outdoor world?
Uh correct. So the first round of forensics, I think I had eight students was all. Um and then for outdoor world, I had the max, which was twenty. We put a cap on. Uh we had to cap just.
Yeah.
Resources, transportation, um being outdoors with a big group and one teacher. Uh but so I had twenty, I was about fifteen and I think Caitlin.
She had the smallest.
She had the smaller, but she, yeah.
Yeah, so but it's first class and first you obviously. Most popular, I remember, to take an election bus either. So.
Yeah, so we were pretty excited about that. Yeah.
We're two sections this.
You added, you added two sections to.
We have two total.
This year, there will be two for quarters. So I'll do one and Caitlin is, or Miss, you know, Miss Hatchell.
I I just think it's good to get kids outside. I mean, and then hopefully that transitions into like lifelong. Right? You know, because then they can take their friends out or, you know, whoever and show them things and and then just gives them outside. So that's the whole, right? It's that we keep moving our way outside instead of like within going more in yours. So.
I will say, I got to be a fly on the wall and watch the day at SRNA with Willoughby on behalf of SEF. It was so sensory rich. I mean, you had older kids teaching younger kids, younger kids moving while they were learning. Having to organize the orienteering, like they had to organize almost clans and figure out, you know, how to do their competition together. It was, and to think that all of those stations, the high schoolers came up with all those projects on their own. And to teach something, you have to know it really well, you know, and so and to think about you guys collaborating as a science team and to think about you collaborating across buildings and then across disciplines with March in library and the media center. Like the whole program kind of hit every nail on the head as far as what we're looking for to really bring different types of groups together and different types of learning together. So it was awesome.
I think it's uh having a high school now, you know, you get to hear like the kids, what classes or what. I heard a lot about this. So I think it's um the positive about it was being outside doing something different, but you can tell they were learning a lot. You know, like that they were normally in a classroom or maybe just but kind of being interactive in nature. And again, kudos to you guys and as a board, whatever we can do to help. Um I think this is great. This kind of stuff, again, I think is memorable for the kids and they're gonna get a lot out of it. So appreciate all your collaborations. I know it's not easy to come up with that curriculum.
Do you have any adult end sections?
No, right.
You just wanna go and supervise a few days.
Camping trip like at the end, like not this year, but maybe in the future. So.
Lots of yes, I got a tent. But yeah, I mean, like keep scaffolding it up, like let's let's build tents, right? Let's, so then we get that figure, you know, it could be something that we build throughout the quarter and then, you know, actually go and get that last. I mean, let's say we just schedule, we're so busy. I mean, we've talked, we've considered that too. It's like we get to that that month of May and that is a super busy month. So that, yeah, is an idea. It's just, I don't know how it will work. Uh but hopefully it will. Yeah.
Did you, I saw you went to the Solon Prairie. Did you guys look at all at the Melinda Reef Riley, Ben and Prairie, North of Town?
We have not been there yet.
I know that they just acquired that, that was two years ago, three years ago. The, oh, I don't even remember. The part of that, yeah. And I know that the those there, I was there reviewing the one of my jobs. So this is I sit on that board that reviews them before they go off the state from the county and I think it's roughly fifty, fifty, fifty percent of it is kind of old prairie burns watershed and the others was was hay. And so we're in the process over the next two decades of gradually reclaiming the hay into prairie. So if you guys look at projects, that may be something with the conservation board that not going to go you go out there, you know, because it's 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 interesting to look at. I know that they have a lot of high hopes for that. Uh similar to, it's just a lot bigger than the three acres you've got in town. It's it's a hundred acres. So that's a, it'll be a large space to explore when they get done. So about fifty acres is is ready to go. So um the conservation board may be able to tell you more about where they're at in that process, but that may be something to look at. Yeah, and there's there's all kinds of, it's good to get things outside. I could help you with orienteering, you know, as a um I have to remember how to do it. I always, it's a while, it's been a while since I've had a peach to scout. So I, but I can, I can.
God learned red in the shed, right? Red in the shed and then yes, you have to have like little like tricks to go. We're all like, you're red in the shed. So.
It's it's a, when this voice went down to Philmont a number of years ago, it's always hard because you've got this and then I remember the adults walking behind us. They clearly, as the scouts clearly made orienteering here and they went an hour out of their way. It's like the adults just standing, sitting in their time, going, I know we went the wrong way. How long until they noticed that they'd gone the wrong way? That's like, say, no, you cannot tell them they went the wrong way.
They went an hour out of their way?
Yep.
Oh, why?
Well, that's, it's a, it's a ten day, it's a ten day hike. So it's not a they just had, they had reorient, they had reroute. So it wasn't, I don't get to go all the way back. They had to find a new route to get to North. Um other other questions? Free? Anything from a high school perspective?
Oh, great opportunity because I'm gonna enjoy this.
If you guys do decide you're trying to do something outside for camping, uh there are opportunities, you know, in the area where it's a big pride nature area. There's a area that the scouts control or manage that uh sets aside for the youth of Solon. It's uh south of town, uh it's got a wooden ravine and an outhouse and, you know, an area that will be, you just have to get voted before anyone does it there because otherwise it's overgrown and so. And I know there's some, if you're looking for other things, it depends how late in the year you go. Up at Scout Camp, they've got the challenging outdoor personal degrees, which is, you know, it's a, it's a course for but they uh during the kind of late spring to early fall, that's open and they they sometimes have groups out there. So that's another option.
What did you say?
Challenging outdoor personal experiences. There's high open, there's low. There's high code and there's low code. I don't like height, so I have nothing to do with height. I participated in the low code, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not climbing up anymore, I don't trust people that they're not gonna drop me, but, but, um. But yeah, it's, there are options, there, there's a lot of things in the area, and there's the Hoover Nature Trail along the river. Uh, that's, uh, but that's a good one as well, so there's a lot, there's a lot of options, so if you've got. If you're looking for things, I, I've got connections on some of the things to check out, so. Any other questions? Okay, thank you everyone, I appreciate you coming to this with us and sharing what's going on. Next up, admin reports, middle school data.
Great, so I wanted to tonight, um, give you a view of the logistical, uh, systematic. Way that we conduct our interventions, um, and because our goal that I'm gonna focus on, are you excited? Um, our goal is, um, one of our goals is the ninety percent proficient on I S A S. And to, to look at E L A, um, numbers tonight, only because we're just coming out of the. Literacy intervention, we rotate between literacy and math, literacy, math, literacy, math throughout the year. Um, these numbers that I'm gonna share are literacy based. And so, um, if our goal is ninety percent, I want to look and see how, how are we helping those. Kids that are struggling to get up over the hump. And so if you look at our sixth, seventh and eighth graders this year, our current sixth graders. Um, last spring tested at seventy-six proficiency on I S A S. Seventh grade were eighty-seven and eighth grade ninety-one. But we wanted to look at that more, um. Of a burn way down to the kids, who are the kids that we're actually talking about, the specific individuals. And so when we look in sixth grade, that's twenty-five, seventh grade fourteen and ten. So then I broke it down, um. Do you want to, okay, um, yeah, go to the next one, I'll come back to that, okay. And to kind of quick summarize the tier system, the, the tier one intervention is just whatever the kid gets in the classroom. And there's interventions that I didn't get that concept in algebra, the teacher worked with me maybe in the classroom or. Through reassessment process or something, but tier one is strictly classroom stuff. And then tier two and tier three are more intensive, so we don't get into one, we bounce to tier two. Um, we have our success lab time, a student's not in band required, um. We, we hit them in success lab and spark time also. So tier two could be, uh, both in spark time and success lab. And when you look at tier three, that's the more, they didn't, tier two wasn't helping them, so we bumped them to tier three. And that could be special education or it could be our interventionist, Julie Smith, doing a very special ed. Tight intervention, um, she was just not identified. And without a doubt, the most important part of our, uh, system is the people. Um, like I said, right now, we're bouncing out of a literacy intervention, uh, to start a math intervention. But when we have math, we have our three classroom math teachers. Um, that provide either the tier one or tier two interventions. When we're in a literacy intervention, like we have just come out of, we have all six of our language arts people. Um, are doing small group lessons as, as an intervention. Um, we also have our interventionist, Julie Smith, as I already mentioned, our success coordinator, Riley Weimer. Instructional coach is Teresa Berg, uh, with three special ed teachers. Um, that are doing that tier three intervention. And we also have our associates and high school interns. Uh, who don't help with the actual physical interventions, but they provide that support for everything else that's going on in the building at that time. Uh, we might be working with small groups, um, not providing that instruction, but just the practice that goes along with. Um, given their classroom work or the intervention. So to look more specifically at those twenty-five kids, uh, in sixth grade. Uh, eight of them are getting special ed minutes, four are in success labs, nine are getting spark time interventions. Uh, one actually moved out of the district. And four of them, as we tested them at the start of the year, um, we, we believe that through, um, our screeners. They're actually where they should be, so they didn't quite qualify. Um, so maybe last spring's test was a fluke, I mean, really are proficient or functioning, um, well. So they didn't fit into one of those groups. Um, so I won't read through all, all of those, yeah, thanks, Josh. Um, but just to give you an idea, that's, that's pretty consistent with sixth and seventh grade as well. Um, there's one, one kid, I mean, all the kids that were, uh, not proficient in E L A. Last year, but isn't getting an intervention, um, and it's because he's a band choir, band choir. Um, and he's giving them math intervention full time, so, um, it was nice. I tend to tackle this project just for that, with that purpose of being able to say, can we look ourselves in the mirror and say, hey? Who gave them to every kid? Um, if you go to the next one, Josh. Uh, as far as our, our system at the middle school, um, spark times are big intervention time. Um, and there's just a couple of things to point out from the systemic side. Um, when we first started, uh, our interventions fifteen years ago, maybe. Uh, went to the conference, went from the solution tree, how you do interventions. You see, you have to block off some times, we blocked off times, but what we realized pretty quick was, that's great, but. Our interventionist can only provide an intervention to how many kids now? Um, because we blocked it off, at that time we were five ages, we had four grade levels that we're trying to share. An interventionist, special ed everywhere. So when, when we broke it apart, uh, so that we have. Three different spark times going on during lunch, recess, spark time, um, our interventionist gets with. Three sixth graders, three seventh graders, three eighth graders, so we've served nine kids in the studio three. Uh, same way with special education, uh, classroom teachers as well. The other big mistake that we made, uh, when we started off was, um, when we set that time aside, uh, for interventions. Um, we wanted everybody to do something literacy, literacy based, so we had, um. Close readings and various strategies that, um, we have this pocket of kids that were not proficient that we're working with. But then we need this extra skill to everybody else. So in reality, what we did was, instead of reducing the gap, we made it bigger because. Eighty-five percent of our kids were getting more skills or helping them, the kids that needed the helps were not. So we corrected that and our, the structure of our time, um. For those not in interventions, it's more just about coverage, time for forty book challenge, um. It's not open to study hall, but it's not, um. With a couple of examples. So those resources, as I said, were so important in the first part, um, I already mentioned them, the L A teachers, the interventionist. Uh, the instructional coach and special ed, um, but it's really our all hands on deck at that point in the day. So if you come, um, to our building at that lunch recess time. And they're, if they're not taking their lunch, the teacher will, they're doing some of them. Um, myself included, my, my intervention is lunch duty, um, because if I'm doing that, it frees somebody else up. Um, our specials teachers, uh, when we go into a D L A intervention, um, we, we need more help. So they take a group. Also an opportunity for tag, um. Those, those kids that need a little bit extra, we do, um, push back, do. Um, but it's also a time for counseling small groups, um. Executive function skills is, is a big thing for us right now, we've got a lot of kids that just have trouble getting. From point A to point B, honestly, um, so they, they need help in that. Um, we provide behavioral supports at that time, um. Have six grade boys that need to figure out how to. Now be recess for the first time, uh, we'll pull them together. And then, uh, of course, spec, uh, special ed minutes at that time. So what questions do you have for me?
Uh, this is great, I am curious, go back to the, the first data points in the slides. Seventy-six percent of our sixth graders by the end of the sixth grade year are not proficient in L A. Our goal is ninety, what, what in there specifically have we changed? This year compared to last year that will help us increase that proficiency rate in grade six?
Um. What we've changed, we haven't, haven't changed a lot over a period of time, because it's, um. When students do improve from six to seven to eight to nine to ten, it's the work that's been going on for years. Um, so. Do, does that mean that it's more severe need in terms of individual students? It doesn't, so the materials and the work that we use are most likely appropriate. But we need to figure out how do we get to a bigger number of kids.
Right, right, because I read that you did this a positive, like seventy-six percent are proficient, but then you flip that. And you're at twenty-four percent and you're not on a grade level by the end of sixth grade. That means there's, they're typically having a lot of.
That's the, that's the beginning, end of fifth grade.
That's the beginning of the year.
Oh, that's, I thought you said that, it was ICAS.
That's from last year's ICAS, so. The six years that we're working with in our building, that was our fifth grade score.
Oh.
And that's why you identified sport that probably didn't need it, once you kind of got back in and reassessed all this stuff.
Yeah. So we have, we have all twenty-five of those kids are accounted for somewhere, is it the right, is it enough? We're not, but we're getting something.
My question is how that is, how that flows? Uh, is it up to the kid to check in with the teacher, does the teacher know exactly which kid gets pulled which day for that intervention?
So we do that intervention for six weeks, every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. And, um, you'll hear the word data law a lot regardless of the building. And so prior to doing that intervention, our language arts team got together, said, these are the kids that need help. And then look deeper about what they actually need help in, and then place the groups.
Kind of attack.
So, so if you get, if the teacher says you're gonna be in an intervention with Julie Smith, that's where you go on for the next six weeks.
And that's that same room she's in, where it's got all the names and all the.
And, and then at the end of the six weeks, they look at all the data again.
Right.
And they reevaluate their groups who needs it, who doesn't now, and, yeah.
So, yeah, so by the end of that, this last six weeks, we, the teacher should know whether that intervention is helpful or not. Um, it doesn't mean that. The next time we come back around with literacy, that, get out of the group or there, end group, because we'll do that data wall again.
So Mike, if we look back, so this is this year's, uh, grades coming in, so if we look back at last year's, would the percentages have been similar? The, the ones that are in sixth grade last year, they're now at eighty-seven percent, was, was, was it similar to seventy-six percent of them were not proficient? I'm just trying to think about from a trend line, I like it, the, the proficiency is going up as the grades go up, but it's. Is it something about this, it's always that, that longitudinal data from a class, because some classes have more needs than others. Is, is it right to assume that kind of proficiency just gradually increases and fewer and fewer students see just supported as you go along? Or does it kind of vary by class?
Um, I think it's safe to say that it improves, the seven, that seventy-six is now higher, that's much lower than the. Now, the seventy-six is an outlier.
Yeah. From the R data?
Yeah, yeah.
It's pretty spot on, more than.
From what you had on my sound system.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Higher, actually.
Then you were down at sixty-eight percent if you can S I S.
Yeah.
I just be really curious to see what the upstream work we need to do and where are the areas? We would need to do so that you rec, you see them all ready to take on that great goal.
What's the most capacity you have with one of the interventionists, when you bring them in? Is it three, is it five?
It, it depends on how intense it is, because there's, um. Some that one is the right number, um, we don't go any bigger than. Four is pushing at five, we might build a lot.
He's one to three, typically one to three, depending, like Mike said, the intensity of the intervention that's needed.
Other questions?
I think it's good stuff, it's, there's a lot going on in it, but.
Do you feel like you have enough resources? Never enough, I'm sure, but what, what, what could, what would we have on your list of asks?
Um, this is gonna sound silly, but like when I show those people that are doing the heavy lifting. I feel really good about this, this school our size with that many people.
Yeah.
Um, the, the change in Riley Warner's role with the success coordinator. And part of her day is doing that and the other part is, um, executive functioning, studying. You're way behind in math, let's get you a Jake Munson type.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, position, um, so I feel really good about that part of it. Where we struggled with is that, um, when they have a spark time intervention and we have all six. E L A people going on, we're relying on specials people getting from SIS over. Just as a pure coverage thing, all they're doing is covering the class. Um, so even if we had three more bodies to cover room to free somebody up to do an intervention.
Could that be an associate role?
Yeah.
We have continuous vacancy.
Yeah.
Associate, we have openings as we speak, they're just always open.
Yeah, to answer your question, people doing the work, I feel really good about, it's just, we can't ever, well, we got.
Covering, covering the tier one classroom while. Focus on learning.
Yeah, it's under the tier one classroom, it's just a. Classroom and the kids are getting in and like, there's no structure going on, it's just supervision.
Supervision. Something to think about.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, good job, I fixed.
Uh, board three updates, strategic plan, Cassie, you're the only one here for that today, so they think of this one?
No, uh, well, yes, actually, uh, are you going to schedule for the time? Like, we need to follow up with Amy Nielsen, she finally got back to us, Davis.
Yeah, I.
Both of us.
Yeah, I was gonna channel through the board.
Next week or tomorrow. Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that will be a great conversation to have about where the direction the state is going around education, that will be part of. How we plan together.
Uh, channel projects, Adam?
Yes, we, uh, Thursday, we're gonna get bids at two o'clock for the C M R at risk, um, that's for Lakeview.
If you're in Adam's vehicle on the way back on Thursday, you can't talk to him.
Um, yeah, working with Brian and Davis and, uh.
Or can't be more than three discussing.
Right, so. No, I understand, you have, you have reading to do.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, so long story short, we're, we're working on that, so hopefully we'll bring that back to the board and we'll be, be able to sit down and kind of go through, um. Kind of that top list, we got kind of narrowed down before right now. And so that'll be big, we're still kind of talking about where to put this indoor facility, um, you know, kind of looking at facilities and. You know, what's gonna work, so we got a lot on our plate, but hopefully we can get some things figured out soon here before Christmas break. And kind of sort of go to the board and get Lakeview kind of on its way, so.
Still exploring property options.
That's great.
Still exploring property options, so.
Uh, financial services committee, uh, Cassie and I are trying to find the time to meet with, uh. Davis and Pat, uh, before the December twelfth work session. Davis and Pat before the December twelfth work session we're gonna talk about. So, uh, we need chat just briefly after the sevens or, uh. While we're in the morning figuring out time.
Tenth or eleventh, I'll be gone until then.
Yeah, and I got, I got, I got this is government on the tenth and eleventh. So our life is gonna be interesting. We may have to get creative. Or do it, or do it later at night or maybe first thing in the morning on the, on that Wednesday, early in the morning.
When we work out.
We'll figure it out.
Early morning is fine with me.
Yeah. Um, governments, um, I think some, some governments.
We haven't seen anything.
Well, we have good towards policy there. So.
Yeah.
It's fun time. Uh, as we talk about that, uh, you reorganize next month. Uh, Megan, I'll talk to you about what the committees do and there'll be an opportunity to figure out, uh, if we did anyone wants to shuffle, that's how's the time to say, I really don't want to do.
Sure, it's the policy committee.
Okay.
I'll be here tomorrow morning. We'll have all, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure he's well aware.
Uh, consent agenda, anything need to get pulled out of there? So just for Megan's. Consent agenda, we look through the list. If there's anything people want to talk about, we pull it out. Otherwise, I take a motion and approve it and we move on. So.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as stated.
Motion by Ross, second, second by Luston, all's in favor, sign if I say aye. Ayes. Posed. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, action items. Uh, approval of bins for district transportation facility. Brian?
Yes, yeah.
I'm assuming you want to talk to us about this, uh.
Anybody has any questions?
So as you know, we, um, part of our geo bond, uh, that was passed last March was to, um. Upgrade the the building north of town for transportation. We've completed the outside. And, um, we took. The inside portion, the far south bay, we're gonna turn, we are going to turn into offices and driver's area and things like that. And, um, we decided it would be more cost effective and it would give us the opportunity to use. As many local contractors as possible if we pulled that out of the project and basically general contracted it ourselves. And so because the project, it's a funny figure, a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, because under state law, it fell under. A hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, we are able to go out and get competitive quotes. We don't have to go get sealed bids, but competitive quotes. And so Brian has spent a lot of time. Soliciting, finding plumbers, electricians, contractors and such. To solicit competitive quotes. And this is what we have come up with as far as the low bid. And that's one thing that we had to. Be tight to. There were some contractors, it's like, oh, really pulling for this person. But we are required by law to go to the low bid. And so these are the low bids in each one of those areas. And we're asking the board to approve these quotes.
Let's go to see some local.
Yeah.
They're either A, a local company, or B, they are in town and have kids that go to the district. Because another company might be in Cedar Rapids, you know, but they're at least.
Yeah.
Have some vested interest in that.
For sure. What's the, what's the timeline for?
Uh, with the approval tonight, my hope is is sometime around the first of December with the holiday being this close. Getting that group together, sitting down, having a meeting, getting a timeline set up. And start times and get everybody kind of familiar with who they're gonna be working with.
Yep.
Uh, and then. Head it hard as soon as we can with completion. Hopefully by the end of March is my goal. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
The painting bid, Natalie noticed, you put an extra five in there.
I figured that.
Okay, so cross out a five.
Oh.
We'll blame Brian.
Five thousand five hundred twenty?
Yeah, that's.
Five thousand five hundred twenty, yes.
Right, I just need to, uh, basically to first line.
Yeah.
A motion to approve, uh, bids for the district transportation facility for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents as presented.
Motion by Luston.
Second.
Second by Ross, discussion. Nice to see you moving forward, uh. There's no rest of their conversation. All of them favor sign if I say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, Kirkwood, three year, Davis?
Yeah, real quickly, this is an agreement that we have with Kirkwood. Every district in our area signs into a twenty-eight E for classes and things like that. Um, just a a few quick facts. We actually had ninety-nine percent. Of our seniors, graduates last year had college credit on their transcript.
Nice.
As a whole school, nine through twelve, fifty-five percent of our high school students are enrolled in a Kirkwood course. Last year, with all the courses that our kids took, it equated to four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in tuition. That if they were paying that as a twenty-year-old, that's what it would cost. So. That's a savings to our families collectively for all those credits that our our kids earned. And and all those credits combined. Our Solon G P A was three point six four. So our kids did really well in those courses. Forty-two of our students. Of all the students that took classes, forty-two were enrolled in twelve different academies. The top three academies that our kids took, one, patient care. Two, advanced manufacturing and welding, and three, business. Those were the top three that most of the, uh, uh, a lot of those forty-two kids were in those. Three, um, academies.
That was last year's.
Yeah.
This, how long is this? Is this just, uh, is it an update or is this a confidently?
Annually, annually renewing.
I'll make the motion to approve the Kirkwood twenty-eight year group. As presented, as presented, motion by Luston.
Second.
Second by Ross, discussion.
It gets really exciting when we get in here because a lot of this stuff is just business and we we worked through it. The fun stuff is always at the beginning of the meeting, uh, and then we get down to business. Um, during their discussion. All's in favor, sign if I say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up is the wellness committee. I think it's wellness committee. Yeah. So we have to approve the wellness committee. Uh, I am looking for volunteer because Jamie and Dan had graciously volunteered in the past and we, uh. Lost Jamie as of Friday of last week. And so I need a board member who has great interest in wellness.
What do you think of?
And so this would be, this basically means you have one for Josh.
Yeah, just for a couple. Have you guys met yet?
No, we'll, we'll, um.
Is it this summer?
Yeah, no, it'll be Ja, end of January, February, set three dates. Um, in the evening, uh, and we'll meet, we'll go through the board po, the the policy itself.
Is this, is this where you know here?
It is. So we need to do, we have to evaluate kind of where we are with some of our goals and where we're headed, so.
So this is a long standing committee?
It's, it's an every year committee.
But every three years, it's the big, it's the big year.
It's, it's more work every three years.
Yeah.
And you just got lucky and joined Jamie this year. Uh, but Dan has been in the volunteer for a while, so we haven't had to think too much about it, except when they report out. Um, I need a motion to approve with Megan.
I'll make a motion to approve the wellness committee for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year with Megan Lang added as the school board representative.
Motion by Luston.
Second.
Second by Ross. Any discussion? Thanks for everyone who's willing to be on that. Um, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carries unanimously.
I'll make it final.
Uh, next up is information items. We have two new school board members, so three is still with us for another month. Uh, her chairman ends after the December meeting. And our new school board members, uh, student school members will start about tonight's standard orientation. Then a little more involved in December and then they 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 get to full voice up in January for for a year, uh. Once three goes off to do her senior spring semester, senior year stuff. Um, our two new student school members are. Jeff, J, J, right? Jay, probably her, uh, who is here with us tonight, uh, and Madison, the senior, senior bell, who is unfortunately sick and wasn't able to join us tonight. So. Jay, do you wanna say hello to everybody or? Say a word, or you can just say no, thank you, and I'll talk to you again.
I'm Jena, uh, junior at Solon, and I'm just grateful for this opportunity.
Do you want to let them know what you were kind of a part of? You did a great job in your interview and very active in the school and community, so.
Yeah, so I am an intern at the middle school. I'm a part of F B L A, student council, yearbook. Um, I just like to keep myself busy. I golf, uh, in spring for the high school. Yeah.
Glad to have you.
Welcome aboard. We're excited.
And Jena's planning on being with us tomorrow at I A S B and hoping, uh. Thursday, 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 and we're hoping Madison will be, he feel around to to make him sure.
Do you have any advice for Jen?
I already talked to her.
Oh, you already did. Secret, the poster.
And she's still here.
Yes.
So, uh, okay, uh, Stone Academy, Davis?
Yeah, um, so there's a new five oh one, three C.
Three.
Three.
One C three?
Five oh and three, five what?
Such as a five oh one C three?
Yes, yes, thank you. Nonprofit, it's a nonprofit, new nonprofit, the Solon Historical Foundation. And, um, they reached out, oh, about a month, month and a half ago. Said that they were working on getting recognized as and getting that indoor license or whatever, what whatever it is to to, um. Under state guidelines to be that, um. Historical foundation, the nonprofit, and what they were acquiring about, uh, the board's interest in, um. Selling, um, the Stone Academy. They would, they're very highly interested in the Stone Academy as part of their foundation. And so.
Historically, we we inherited that many, many years ago.
I did not know that.
Without, uh, and so we've been responsible for it. So Brian and his folks have to go out there and. Go and take care of stuff out there and we basically use it. We used to use it more.
And they, it hasn't been used since I've been here. Now granted, COVID, I think I've had a little bit to count that, you know.
You just use it more, but.
The school doesn't use it at all.
Yeah, and so we used to use it more, we bust students out, but I don't. And we leave events out, but it hasn't been used, I think, since pre-COVID.
As a field trip or?
Field trip. So it hasn't been used, it's probably been seven years, seven, eight years.
Yeah.
Um, and so it would be good for it to be used together. We know, I know my kids, but trying to, they went out there and related, but I think it's. An opportunity for us to have it made use and right now it just drains funds from our accounts and it doesn't serve our educational mission. And so.
So what would, what, what would they want to do with it eventually? Just use it more or it would be an actual standing where they would have kind of things day to day there?
Oh, yeah, take care of it, maintain it. Um, there, there's, I mean, it's, we're not doing it justice as far as what we're invested in it. Because like Tim said, you know, money needs to go elsewhere with the public funds, but being a foundation, they can. They can keep it up and they can also, you know, use it more.
Yep.
Yeah.
That needs a lot of.
P L C, yeah.
What size would it about, at least the property, how many acres?
Uh, it's about two, just in order of three, I think. Okay, two point seven, two point eight acres. So.
So if you release it, our kids could still do projects out there.
Yeah, we could, we could resume one that I think would be easier. If if they, if they bring it up to. Up to speed and it's, there's more out there, then there's more things to do. I think, I think some of the teachers who are more involved in doing some of that stuff have retired and been like, that's what's caused the. The fall off over, over the years. And so. Um, yeah, I think it's.
What's the process to say yes to that?
So they have to get their ducks in a row and then there's two ways to approach it, as I understand it. We could. Pursue getting rid of it, in which case we'd have to post a notice and then take bids. And they could win that. Or if they're interested in acquiring it, they could make us an offer and then if we accept it, we can just sell it to them. Or.
I like the ladder.
I do too. Um, and I think that's the approach they're taking because that's. And so I think we're just kind of, we're, we're waiting that when they're ready to move, then we'll entertain an offer if they, if they want to make one. Um. But if we put, put out the business, it's really complicated because then other, other revised laws. First opportunity go, because the school is your property, it goes to, uh, a charter school or a private school can acquire it and. And so we, there are hoops to jump through if we, if we try to dispose of it, so.
Um, I like it.
Yeah, so we're just waiting on that. I think that they're excited. We also apparently, um, I'm forgetting her name, um, down. We have, we have some of the artifacts removed out of there that are actually being stored at the school. That would need to go, could go back to them when, um. When they take, because there were leaking the roof and so they moved everything that was important out and it's being stored in our buildings, so.
Does it have any heat or anything on them?
Thanks to Stone there, right? There's an old potbelly stove. We actually have. The original one still is down in the shop. But there's no heat or or electricity or anything. It's.
Just get that bright light out front, dude.
Yeah, the, the, the forty dollars a month or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's just that light, the money that's like this, that electricity.
And it does. Pay insurance on, right, because of the building?
Uh, I mean, it needs several hundred thousand dollars probably of work just because of keeping it historic. Yeah.
That's not like you just shingle your house with, yeah, back on stuff. It's gonna take a lot of money to.
And they've got, they've got the interest in doing it, so I think that's.
Excellent.
Uh, board policy, we're up for anti-bullying harassment policy forms. We've got, we're not expecting to change the policy or, you know, being informed that the forms that we're using. Are required to be linked. And so we're now getting copies of what's said, as I understand it.
It is. So Natalie passes it out and what you will see and, and, um. We, the admin team went through. Went through the links and it's front back. So you've got the policy, you do the policy or just the links?
It is a conflict.
Okay, so policy. So if you flip back, you can start to see where, uh, anti-harassment bullying complaint form. Well, we want to make it, you know, easy for a parent or, you know, somebody to locate that form in our policy and complete it. And then for transparency sake, um, we also linked in the tools that the investigator will use with a complaint. So that if a parent has a complaint, Josh, jump in. If a parent has a complaint, they can fill this form out. And, you know, it's right in our policy to link. And then they'll also be able to see. That the process that will take place to investigate the complaint. And so these will all be linked into the board policy that I believe you approved last year sometime, some revision to it. So. This is not changing any. The policy is just adding links for the, for the forms so that they're more visible and more transparent.
In the handbook as well?
I have to.
No?
That, that piece that we've had a conversation about, I think we might be missing that piece in our handbooks that we need to add. Another, um, component that we're, that I'm trying to figure out a really good spot is on the website. So it's accessible, especially the complaint form.
So that'll be the.
Yeah, yes, it would be. It would be because if we put it on the website, yeah. It'll be under the menu. It would be under the menu items and probably stuck somewhere. That's where I got, I, I want to make sure I put it in a good location so it's accessible.
Hopefully, hopefully we get a new discussion, just this information, just how to make you aware that we're putting a link into the board policy that you approved.
Yeah.
Uh, certified enrollment.
Okay, the next is, these are screenshots from, um, the state. Uh, site, um, our beds, and you can see up top certified enrollment. Um, if you go down to actual enrollment line seven, negative fourteen point six six, so we are down fourteen students. Um, we knew we were gonna be down most likely because we graduated a hundred and forty students last year. Even bringing in a normal kindergarten class, which is typically a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen, that's gonna put us behind the eight ball. So. Um, we anticipate, you know, this is an anomaly and we'll, we'll. Trip, trip back up.
Twelve grade only has right now a hundred and five.
Yeah.
So it's very small.
Yeah, yeah. And we brought in a really, we brought in a good kindergarten class. Um, and then just to give you an idea, we've got open enrollment. The, the middle one is open enrollment in. So students coming into Solon, now remember sixteen, I believe, due to classroom space, insufficient classroom space, it was closed down. Open enrollment didn't accept anyone other than. Um, other than at the time, we had, um, those kids in school, we would bring in their siblings.
Yeah.
So those, those kids now are. Those kids in school, we would bring in their siblings, so those, those kids now are eighth graders. That have, would bring in siblings. Other than that, there hasn't been any space for open enrollment coming in. And so um our number at one time when I got here, I think was close to one twenty, as all those open enrolled kids have graduated out. And we've not allowed any in, that number is now down to thirty-five um coming in. As far as going out, the number was always typically averaged around thirty, thirty-five. And you can see we've got fifty-nine now going out. And it breaks down to by what grade level and what school they're open enrolled out to. Um, nine kids, two, two, two that are going to Marion and seven that are going to Mid Prairie, those are homeschool kids.
That's what I was gonna.
And those, those two districts have a, a homeschool assistance program, which is attractive um to those that choose to homeschool.
That tends to be the whole.
You know what it was last year going out? Are, are people going out this year than last year?
Yes. Uh, as, as you look, I looked at the numbers, you know, I'm looking at some of these, I, I, I went to, there are tools out there, and so I went out to the state. The I S B website, I know they ran it back and I think it was around forty-six or forty-seven last year, so about ten, ten more open enrolled out. We're up, if you remember last year, we're up, but if I remember correctly, then last year we went up to Davis about that, we were up, and I think all those were three families that moved in. Who kept their kids in the districts that they were in, so that, that was, was it two families last year, CCA, not CCA, but uh college community and one family that. Moved in and lost their kids in Iowa City, so they become new open enroll out, but they were never in the district. And so Adam Davis was gonna try and dig into this year's open enroll outs to see where those additional.
We have, we have a list of every single family, all fifty, fifty-nine of those kids, the families are in. And we were going to start collecting data on just specifically why.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know if the voucher system, like you say, voucher system has contributed at all.
Yeah.
People would like to go to private institutions.
Looks like none of them are in. But that, I think that would show a different, at least with open roll out, none of them are showing up for that, so, but that's a good question, because there's another. I've definitely worked with reporters for subtracting that. That's a.
That's online school.
That, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
What is the total area that we're talking about that these represent?
So if, I don't know if, have you, do you have access to your board email yet or not?
Yeah, yeah.
So Natalie, this, uh, this morning at eleven thirty-six A M sent out a link that has a map of all, where all the people that are open enrolled out in our districts are. Where those houses are, so you can look at that.
But I guess, I guess at the bottom, like, what is our total range that we're discussing of all these schools? Is it a geographical area?
Yeah.
Out, outside of Cam and Clayton Ridge.
And all the surrounding districts.
They're just all neighboring surrounding.
So districts that touch our district?
Pretty much, yes, yes.
Uh, other than Marion and Carrick, which are, which are, which are homeschool, Clayton Ridge, which is on our, yeah, college community. Little canvas.
They, how big are they getting? For a while, they, they were really trying to. As online schools? Yeah. Well, at one point, there was a cap, a cap of how many the state, and I believe in the last couple of years, they've lifted the cap. So it's unlimited. It's unlimited, and the, the law is, uh, they can go at any point in time that they want to. Not with open enrollment out to those online schools.
You have to be accredited, you gotta go through that accreditation, you've gotta get an approved online provider at Iowa.
They really kinda made us, I mean, that kinda, that's a small district, it kinda was their niche there, they forgot everybody to pull them in, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we, we're, we're, we're losing some students to surrounding areas, and we're up for the last couple of years, and we gotta look into what's. What's causing that, because we were fairly steady, it was in the, you know, upper thirties, low forties, and it was just kinda consistently that number over time. And so we bumped up the last two years, and so I think the question is, uh, what's going on? And last year we looked at it and it was all, it was about families moving in, that we didn't wanna, the kids didn't wanna switch schools. Now the question is, what's, we've got another update.
Right, and that was the time where we had a kind of flip-flop, we had more coming in than we have going out, now we flip-flop. It would be really good to understand if there's any unmet, unmet needs that would cause that, to decide that that's.
Well, I know some of them over, over the years, we had some people that were interested in FFA that were going out because they're part of families. And so I, I, I knew some families were going to other districts because we were talking about FFA, now we've got that, that changes the dynamics, uh, then.
Different programming. Sure, it's just good to know, like, what we, as we expand it and.
Yeah, and I think the other, other aspect of that is, you know, uh, is data's reference, going back to twenty sixteen. Twenty sixteen is when we tightened uh our institution classroom space policy, the, to, to lower the numbers, when we're seeing this growth as students move through the system. And so we had a higher cap, we, we, we're fully cutting off, but then we're getting larger class size at the high school because kids would continue to move in. And so until we got more space, taking care of the other buildings, we, we tightened it down. You know, it's been, you know, when, when we review that policy series, follow those, those numbers again, see if they still make sense. Well, once we complete the building, if we've got some capacity, we wanna adjust those numbers, but that's not a conversation for the.
Two things come to mind is, um, alternative school, would this go against us for the open enrollment out?
No, it'd be tuition out.
We tuition out.
Okay, and then like the Montessori schools, does that show up?
No.
No, that wouldn't count against us on this, okay.
Yeah.
No, cause it's a private.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think there's a separate report that shows private schools, so I think we have to look at that as, um.
Well, cause we'd need to look at, um, captive private instruction or private instruction, uh, and the number of students out that way.
Yeah.
And that's where they're either truly homeschooling or they're going to a, yeah, a private school that's uncredited like Montessori would do that. Um, there's a couple other schools I know, uh, kids are going to.
Right, yeah, so, um, why don't you guys seem to pull those numbers to show those with the board, uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll circle back on this, but I think that's a. Yeah, if you've got any mind you want, we need to get on, we need to, we need to discuss and, uh, moving forward.
This is, um, just, you've got that sheet with the yellow, just to explain that, if you, the far left, the far left is, um. You can see.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the kindergarten, we have one section with seventeen students. Go down, we have a hundred and six kindergarten kids in five sections, while the state views the kindergarten. Cause you have their five-year-olds as kindergarten, so really we have six sections of kindergarten. So, you know, a hundred and six and seventeen, that's our, that's our kindergarten class, so it, it's a good-sized class coming in. And then you can see first grade has ninety kids with five sections and on, on such, now if you go over, we have, um. Where we close open enrollment, close O A E, close open enrollment app, so we close it at eighty kids. So if we have an incoming kindergarten class of eighty, then it's closed, we don't take anyone from the outside. And that was just like Tim was saying, is we were seeing early on that we may have a, a class of a, of a hundred coming in. To kindergarten, but we had some, some examples where by the time they got to fifth grade, now they're at a hundred and thirty. Or that class that just graduated, uh, last year, they came into kindergarten around ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and they graduated a hundred and forty. So that's what we were kind of anticipating, it hasn't taken off like we thought it would.
Yep.
Um, and so that's just kinda, we keep track of this, um, each year, just to kinda look at our, um, class sizes and our sections. And, and what capacity we have and such, so that's what that yellow sheet means.
Yeah, just for reference, you, you, you've got the old numbers, most of the grades wouldn't be a pet, which, some of the smaller classes, like the first grade class would be under the, what the old limits were. And most of the classes, whether at, at the current limits or the old limits, uh, it's, it's still be closed, so. Um, but it's, it's worth a conversation, um, if we finish construction projects, we just have to, we, we wanna continue to manage growth. Um, like that capacity, uh. We, we got capacity, the, the state says we're supposed to let students open enroll, so we just have to be mindful of that, so, um.
Yeah, the report card, so, um, I sent a link out to where you can get on the Department of Ed. Site, uh, it, it, uh, you know, I thought about printing off some pages, but there's just so much data there. Be easier if you just wanted to click around yourself and, and dig in, I will say, you can edit the whole district profile. And then you can break it down by building profile, now because this is based, the, 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 the only piece of assessment data. That goes into this is the I S A S, you won't see Lakeview, well, you'll see Lakeview on there. But their designation is, is whatever the intermediate designation is. Since those kids filter into the intermediate, they just assign them the same as far as designation. So what I gave you was if you go to the district, not a, not an individual building, but at the district profile. And that's kind of an analysis that the admin team did as we looked through the data. And as you can see, the first question, what do we notice about this data, what does it tell us? And so we just pulled just quick facts on the district profile page, that you'll be able to use that link to go in. And then after just pulling out facts in each area, and I'll point out, uh, the fact that, um, you know, ninety-nine percent of our kids. Took the assessment, well, why didn't a hundred percent? Because some of our kids take an alternative assessment that is dictated by their I E P. That's why we don't have a hundred percent, when you look at chronic absenteeism, we, we lead the state in that low figure. Our absenteeism is fantat, uh, uh, is very, very low, so we have great attendance at Solon. And, um, it, under that category, if you look at the third bullet, the kids that were identified as chronically absent. That group of kids, they actually, their attendance actually grew from, from twenty-three to twenty-four. Fiscal years, so the kids that are chronically absent, we actually improved their absenteeism. Um, as, as a positive, our graduation rate is above state, um. Um, you can just go down the different categories that the report card does.
I think the only one to call out, I think, because we've already talked about that scenario you guys are focusing on, is just that post-secondary readiness. You know, that class before them, you know, being work-based starting, you know, we talked about how you wanna be working to improve that. And that's, as you look through, we're above or right at the states on everything except for that one, and so this is, that's an area where. Um, we, we've talked about the fact how we get more kids to do internships and job shadows. Uh, and that's a, that's, that's a challenge, because our kids are busy with a lot of things, and trying to convince them to give up additional time has been a struggle, so.
Well, wouldn't you say too, kind of, where we live industry-wise, like compared to a town like Washington, for instance, or, you know. Where there's more things in town that's local, all our kids have to.
Having been on the other side of the university, we have been coming all the time, and they come from everywhere, they come, we, we get them from everywhere, and so, yeah. You know, but whatever reason, fewer students from Solon have chosen to engage in that versus kids from West Ranch, when they're tipped in, when they're, yeah, other places. And so I think that, I think locations could be a factor, but it's not a, you know, I, I think, it's a commitment of actually having. To, to work that into your schedule, I think our students are just very busy, we have to figure out how to let them know why it's important and.
And I think as the, the C T E program continues to, you know, as they did their presentation last month. You know, trying to expand those programs, they went through their, um, their needs assessment or their site visit. Um, and that, they did really well with that, and then even we have to submit a district career and academic planning plan. To the state, um, and it's, it's evaluated, and we got, we had an, an exceptional, uh, rating on our, our D cap. So it's, if we have the stuff there, it's just how do we bring the kids in and execute that, so.
So you'll, you'll see the first question, what do we notice about the data, then it's what additional questions did we generate? And then what is the, what does the results mean for our district? So we've looked at what these results mean, um, when we talk in December about, um, our financials. About, um, our enrollment, our financials, uh, predicting S S A, uh, kinda the amount of money we get. And then what we feel our priorities are for next year, we'll address this and we'll address this with some ideas and some plans that. Will hopefully be pretty cost neutral as far as addressing some of these with C T E and expanding out and things like that, so. We'll, we'll bring that to you as far as what we would recommend as, as a staff, and then the third, the third page has some definitions. And then it has the categories that the state is labeling schools, and then what rating each of our schools was, um. Occurred, and you can see our middle school had a top rating with exceptional.
Yeah, no, yeah, and this is where it gets quirky, and I'll, I'll get on my high horse for just a second, where, which is both is one of the key factors, and if you're. If everyone's higher, then you don't have, you can't score as well. With the L A issues, you know, we're talking about the L A moving to the middle school, if, you know, they can do better, because they grow a lot in middle school, because. So if, if, as sis increases, the middle school may go down because they, they don't have as much room for growth, so the numbers get a little bit quirky.
Is that the only factor that goes into these point systems?
No, it's, it's, it is proficiency and growth are, they're, they're weighted, and it becomes.
Growth is more attractive, so.
Well, it's, the problem is.
It's not the only data point that goes in.
That, that, that's, that's true, but the way the state does it, if, putting my statistics hat on, it's like, there's a correlation between these. And they, and they move jointly, and it's like, they don't, they don't account for, there should be a joint measure that looks at both growth and proficiency. And that would make, that would make, that would make the numbers more meaningful, right now it's trying to tease apart, it's like, okay, why are we here versus there? Uh, when you look at it, that, it, it's not the only thing, but, you know, it is a, it's a challenge, uh. When you, when there's not as much opportunity for growth.
Well, in this year, they did, the state did change their, I think we talked about that, they changed their, their measures. I mean, growth, proficiency are two, chronic absenteeism was a big one, um, high school was college.
Yeah.
Uh, credit, and then the work-based readiness, um, I think those are the main factors, and then elementary. What I think the main ones were chronic absenteeism, the growth and the proficiency.
Yeah, we, we should compare ourselves because I, I would, I would advise us to compare ourselves against other liked.
Yep.
Districts, not necessarily state average.
Yes, we agree.
And to see where they're at, because there are other socioeconomic status schools like us that are. Scoring higher than we are, not to say that, you know, one way or another, but it would be understanding, like, what are they doing different that we may want to adopt.
One, one thing we have looked at as an admin team is the E V O S, uh, program, there's a new report in there that has a scatter plot. So example would be Gilbert, so we kinda looked at some grade levels, so we were doing some comparison. Uh, and where we are compared to them, knowing that they're very like, like us. Yeah, as well as, um, other districts around us like Mount Vernon, trying to get a, uh, engage where we are, so. Uh, we have been having those conversations, it's been really interesting to look at, so, um, but definitely.
Probably also plus ten, minus ten for enrollment size and live long after.
Yeah, 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 cause it looks at both, scatter plot looks at, so, where are we growth-wise and achievement-wise? And which quadrant do you think?
We're rolling right up with seven, uh, yeah, if Cassie wants, we'll, we'll wrap it with all our business, if you want to sit down to get over there.
I would love to, I can't get any, because I have clutch.
So, uh, we'll, we'll wrap it real quick, uh, we're, we're learning, or.
I'd have to get keys and everything, so.
You're getting.
They're good.
I have to get keys for the car.
Yeah, they're on that hook.
The car keys.
I don't need the shelf, that shelf, that, yeah.
Oh, I was not understanding you, you said you needed keys.
So we did tomorrow morning. Okay, see you in Des Moines tomorrow, yes, and then see you tomorrow morning. Thank you.
I S B tomorrow, uh, what are we reading tomorrow, uh?
So what time are we playing on departure, one o'clock? Are you going with us, Megan, or are you going separately?
I'm gonna take off early with Cassie, and do that intro course sometime.
Sweet, are you doing board finance in the, school finance in the afternoon? It, it's a good primer, uh, because it's a little bit of a water hose, understanding the silo, so I look forward to seeing when we get down there, uh, tomorrow. Um, Natalie, you're heading later in the morning?
Yeah.
Um, and we've got arrangements for you to come down, there's a sort of a good shape there. Um, talking points, this is where we get to say words about what it is that we, that resonated with us. You wanna ask Jenna, cause she's, she gets so observant, so we're gonna get ready for it, you know, we're late enough in the year, we're gonna start with three.
Um, one of the things, it's like my dad's yelling for guys.
One of the things that's like my dad's saying for guys is, okay, they know we did that, but that's really great. New one, but. Not surprised doing that, but.
Maybe you'll be helping.
Yeah.
I don't know if we bought me out there.
Yeah, I want to go off the outdoor world, uh, of the science stuff, you know, at the high school, but it's really good. Um, it's good to see our kids getting outside. We're a pretty unique area where we get access to McBride and all the nature stuff. So, uh, again, I, I heard really good things about it just from high school kids. So hopefully that can continue to grow and whatever we can do to kind of help.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say with the, um, transportation building, learning that if it's under a certain dollar amount, we can be our own GC. So using the resources and talent and people we have, like in Brian's. To figure that out and keep things local is really nice.
And I'll just touch on the, on the middle school data. It's always, you know, we're, we're going to the cycle, looking at all, all the various data. It's always, uh. It's, it's good to see progress, uh, you know, obviously we want everyone to be a hundred, hundred percent proficient. Uh, but it's good to see that as they're going through the system, uh, that our students is not proficient is, is continuing to decrease. So that's a. That's a, that's a good thing to see in that data. Our next reading of the board meeting is two.
Wait, is that Thursday?
Thursday, some, Thursday, December twelfth.
Did I make another error?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what.
Thursday, December twelfth, uh, in the central office boardroom, uh, and remember that that is a. That's a three-meeting night. Uh, we'll have the out. I think it's a three.
Cause we're outside Thursday.
It's Thursday. So it's Tuesday.
Yeah, I know, Thursday, I'm on it.
Uh, I think that's a three-meeting night. I think we have to.
But you have a board, um.
We have to reorganize, uh. And then we have a work session after that. So, um, I don't remember if we have to have a. Chris would normally be able to remind me, but I don't remember. We have to have two separate meetings for the reorganization where. There's the outgoing and incoming. I, I don't think we have to because there was no election this year.
So we got to post anything that we're going to have something with, uh, CMR at risk that we possibly come together.
Yeah, yeah, and that's another issue. We are doing the CMR at risk, we'll, we're reviewing those. There may be a call for a special board meeting, uh, early in that week, uh, first week of December, um. To talk through and select one of those, so, um. Natalie will be in touch on that, uh. Our students are always welcome to attend our unplanned meetings, but we also understand that, uh, they're not necessarily. They don't necessarily have to attend all these things, um, but you're always welcome.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alaska.
Second that motion.
Second by Lane, uh, all in favor, sign if I may say aye. Aye, motion to adjourn is.